Having the surgery, was that he had a stroke? That's what he told me. He was concerned about having the surgery. But he wanted to. I said, um, probably not.
Usually.
That's so nice.
Yeah, usually it's way better than hotels.
Oh, that's awesome.
I hate hotels.
Won't you just come for a long, you'll get to take a look. If it doesn't come for a long, you'll get to really like that sweater.
I called to see if he was gonna be here. Mike called.
I'd hear it happen.
It's what's serious for them, there's time for almost a month of January.
I like that sweater, where'd you get that? John needs one.
I think I love that.
I like it.
Arizona.
Yeah, 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 I like it, John needs a nice one. Yeah.
That's one that I'll probably have to attend, I'll do that online.
I'm getting one, really nice in a year from Hello Being or the other. Whether he likes it or not.
Because people who throw an area in.
Yeah, John.
You're stupid. You told me that.
Yeah.
Not since.
Um, but there's problems.
You didn't have that.
Yeah. Hi there, that's what we heard, or did you?
I actually.
They're still on hold, huh?
Uh, next week.
Next week, huh? Oh gee, I'm sorry. You'll have to tell us more about it afterward.
Yeah, after the meeting, I'll tell you.
You can't eat turkey then.
It'll be in the venture.
Well.
I do, to help today, which one do you wanna do? I did pledge, isn't it?
Yeah, I just have to bring some paper to screw them off. Sure.
That's interesting.
You know, that, you know, it's more affordable. To give people a chance to get in. But this is two downs, seven acres.
Britten, are we ready?
Okay.
We'd like to welc- would like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting today on Tuesday, November twelfth. We will begin today by first having our invocation by Commissioner Call. And then Commissioner Sh- Showers will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening. We are very grateful to be gathered here together. We are grateful to live in London. We are grateful for the country we live in. We are grateful for those freedoms that we have and grateful for this past week to be able to have the opportunity to vote, to vote and elect those who we choose to vote for. We are grateful for the opportunity to discuss things this evening. We pray that we can do so in a, in a, we can listen to each other and make decisions that might be good for the community. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're gonna begin our meeting tonight with an audible roll call of the Commissioners. Sharon Call.
Here.
Uh, Mike Marchbanks is currently, is he expected today? Okay, he's currently not here, we'll see if he joins us later. Rob Callis.
Here.
Steve Johnson, here. Scott Thompson.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
And Karen Danielson.
Here.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our last Planning Commission meeting, which was held on October fifteenth. The Commissioners have received these minutes beforehand and have had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or additions? The only correction I see is that I was not conducting. Um, cause I was absent. And so that needs to be.
Down on line thirty-one, it's the same thing, Johnson, Jefferson Johnson.
Yeah, so.
Just change those two, those two things to Commissioner or Vice Chair Callis.
And I think we'll be good.
Yep.
Other than that, I didn't see anything.
Anything else? Okay, barring those two corrections, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes, so it's printed with those two corrections.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous. Item three on our agenda tonight is a time for public comment. This is a time, if the public would like to comment or bring something to the Commission's attention that is not on the agenda, this is a time to do so. Is there anybody here that's, that is here for that purpose, to bring something to the Commission that's not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number four.
Mike's coming in.
Oh, uh, and let the minutes note that Commissioner Marchbanks has now joined us. Get to item number four. Uh, item number four is a conditional use permit for Willis Diesel Vehicle Repair Business. Our presenting staff is Britten and Trevin Willis is the applicant. Um, is the applicant here? If you want to come up and you can sign in. Just so we have your information for the record. And then we'll have any questions. And we'll turn the time over to Britten to present.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, so, the applicant today is Trevin Willi- Willis from Willis Diesel LLC, uh, who's applying for a conditional use permit for, uh, vehicle repair business, um, to do auto repairs and maintenance on light diesel trucks. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, Willis Diesel was a business in, in London and was actually in, uh, this property, sort of adjacent to where they're currently proposing to exist in, uh, right around this area here. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, they were approved for a conditional use permit. Since then, they've moved out of London, but have, uh, come, come back to London and are hoping to get reapproval for a, uh, conditional use permit at this new, uh, location they're currently at. When I was speaking with Trevin Willis, um, he was telling me that all of the work on the light, uh, diesel trucks are gonna be done entirely indoors within the, uh, within the shop there. And that the outdoor space behind the, uh, the shop is going to be used purely for, uh, just storing the, uh, trucks, waiting for them to be picked up or to be, uh, maintained on. And, um, as of back in Sa- back on Saturday when the, or Friday, when this, uh, staff report was sent out, we did not receive any, um, any public comment. However, on Monday, we did receive a comment from one of the, uh, local residents that I'll give to you. So, the person who offered public comment is the property owner, Josh Martin, above, uh, Willis Diesel, who owns this area here, who is stating that they are in support of, uh, Willis Diesel getting approved for a, uh, conditional use permit. Some other things of note is that there's currently planned to have three parking stalls on the property with a, uh, one handicap parking, um, for city staff. We see that as an appropriate amount for this use, since the intended, uh, business model they plan to do is have, uh, customers come and drop off the vehicles and pick them up. They won't be there for, uh, long periods of time. And lastly, when discussing this with, um, the Engineering Department and the Public Works Department, they noted that there is in the back area there a, um, stormwater utility easement, or storm drain easement on this property that you can, uh, see there. There's a storm drain basin on the other property, adjacent to the, this property. And we've added a condition of approval, uh, to kinda keep that in mind, uh, for potential runoff that could be brought into that storm drain or storm basin. Um, that could be something that the Commission, uh, could, could, could discuss for that. Lastly, um, when we went and inspected the site, this is the back of the area where, um, customers will be bringing the trucks into the, the back area that have to be worked on at the shops. This is from the existing uses of the past, past tenants there. This is where the dumpster would be planned to be at. And, um, we also took some pictures of the back parking area. Um, and as you can see from these, uh, pictures, that, um, we don't see that. There will be, um, a lack of space for, um, the business to have, um, the trucks waiting on, uh, for, for business. And, uh, there won't be any, any evidence of excessive trucks being stored here, uh, from what we can tell. But, uh, other than that, um, uh, if the Commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Mr., can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's see, this zone requires a conditional use for this lot?
Correct, so that's, uh, one of the main reasons why we're here. So, the standard land use table that we have, uh, requires for any business looking to do auto repairs uh, or maintenance in the light industrial zone to apply for a conditional use permit.
And then was this aerial, a recent aerial?
So, this one is a li- little bit less, uh, less recent. So, uh, you can tell from the county picture that there was quite a bit of debris here and some trucks stored. Um, however, the pictures that I, I was showing previously is, was from, uh, about a week and a half ago. Um, so this is a little bit more accurate to what it is, uh, looking like today.
Does the zone require a fenced area for storage?
Not in the light industrial zone.
Okay.
What was, what has this, uh, building, I'm pretty familiar with that area down there. What was being operated out of there before? I, I just wondered why we're doing a conditional use, if it was a similar use.
It was a landscaping business.
Oh, okay, makes sense.
Which building, were you in the, let's see, where's the applicant? Were you in the other building before?
No, no, it's, we were across the street.
Oh, okay, alright, gotcha.
Yeah, they were in one of these suites here.
I see. Okay.
I just have what maybe one, we have a history with them being in the, of the city. I'm assuming, I don't see any history or anything where there were any complaints or anything, so I'm assuming they were good tenants when they were here before and.
Yes, and Trevin runs a great business. Lots of people bring trucks to him. And so we have had some complaints about too many trucks in the past. Uh, but I think this is the perfect location because they'll all, they'll be in the back. It won't be conflicting with other businesses in a business park.
So.
It's our first location where we have our own, it's our own drive, our own.
So, so any complaints that were, were issued in the previous location here in London will be mitigated by this new location?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I, I didn't see anything, so I just wanted to, to make sure that, that, you know, there weren't problems that he left and then that we're bringing back. I, I hadn't heard of any, so that's great. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? You know, I was just reading through the minutes, I saw, I, 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 I motioned to approve it last time. I won't do that this time as, as Chair, but, uh, I, I feel the same, I guess, this time as I did previously.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit to use the property located at thirteen oh two West, three hundred South for an auto repair business with the following conditions. And those are conditions one through five, as noted.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
One through five or one?
One through four.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Alright. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously and welcome back to London, we're happy to have you. We're excited to see how your business goes. And then we're moving on to item number five on our agenda. Give me just a second to get there. Item number five is a preliminary subdivision approval and twelve hundred West Road dedication. The applicant is Ivory Development, and once again, it's the ap-
They are not here tonight, they've asked me to represent this to you, since the Commission's familiar with it.
Okay, so, uh, we'll have, uh, Mike Florence present for us and we'll go from there.
All right, so, uh, earlier this year, the, the Planning Commission and City Council approved this, uh, last single-family home and townhome phase at the Anderson Farms Development, which is, uh, parcel H. And under the, so in two thousand and sixteen, we assu- we, the city, um, approved a development agreement with Ivory Homes, and it says, as part of parcel H, they have to dedicate the, the roadway in front of, um, that phase of the development. And so, that's what they're doing, uh, this evening. Uh, the, there's a proposed subdivision plat, um, for your consideration. A little bit about twelve hundred West, um, he- here's the subdivision plat. So, a little bit about twelve hundred West, you can see, um, Ivory has created the deeds to, to show the location of it right now. But right now, what you're can, what you're approving is from Wheatgrass Lane to five hundred North and just that section. The section north of Wheatgrass, Wheat, Wheatgrass Lane will be, um, brought before you when the multifamily development portion of the project is, um, is ready to move forward. So, um, with that, let me give a couple other items about, uh, twelve hundred West. I included the wrong road profile in your packet, I included the fifty-eight foot road profile. Uh, twelve hundred West is actually a fifty-five foot, um, road profile. It'll have a trail on the west side, uh, next to the townhomes, uh, two eighteen-foot travel lanes, uh, would, that'll allow for parking, um, and then sidewalk on the east side. This is the overall transportation plan for Ivory Homes. You can see this brown area is that twelve hundred West, uh, that will eventually go out to, to seven hundred North. So, with that, um, we've, we've suggested some conditions of approval on there. One of those conditions is, you can see that, um, with all the deeds that Ivory's put together, um, it's created all these small little parcels. Uh, we would like them to clean that up, the portion north of what you're approving tonight, so that it's ready to go with the next subdivision plat. Um, so just some cleanup items there. So, uh, with that, we've provided motions, the motion with items one through five to, um, for your consideration and approval this evening. Just a quick question, um, so, can you give us an update on the, uh, development? I mean, obviously, they're proposing this, cause they're getting out of inventory, I'd assume. Yes. Is it going well? Um, they're, they're, they're putting the roads in right now, I think they, we should have a building permit in the next couple weeks. And so, um, yeah. Going as planned? Yes. Perfect. Yep, they've done all the internal roads, that they're, I think they're trying to pave them quickly, so, um, but yeah, you can see these internal roads as part of this development, those are almost completed.
I, I just have a question, just so I remember, from when we approved all of these things originally, was this all part of the original development agreement, or?
Well, yes, but then we, um, we amended it.
Right.
Back in, what was that, January?
Yeah.
Of this year. Um, and we, so because the city purchased this portion where, behind where it says Wheatgrass Lane, because we purchased that eight acres, we modified what this last section of parcel H looks like.
Okay.
We added a, so it has some larger, they're calling their estate lots, some mid-sized lots, and then, uh, some townhomes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yep.
And I'm sure you explained that before, I just needed a review.
They start running together, but that's where we did the, extended the deep lot for the retail.
Right, and I, I understand that, yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Mike, acting either for the developer or?
I have a question, for twelve hundred West, we talked before, like, one side was going to have park strip and the other side a path. I can't remember, what were we saying on that?
Yeah, so that's this one here. So it'll have the eight-foot trail on the west side, ne- next to where those townhomes will go in. Um, they got rid of the, the, the park strip.
So that would be a wider, what, road?
So it would be a wider asphalt to allow for, um, visitor, bigger trucks or visitor parking, depending on how the city decides to stripe it. So your typical asphalt width in London is usually thirty-four feet, and this one's thirty-six.
Deep section. That the city purchased. That's, that's it.
Any other questions? This, this isn't a public hearing, but we always love to hear questions from the public, so we will entertain one.
Yeah, like, I just have a question, uh, so, if you could pull up that map where twelve hundred hits, uh, five hundred, right now, the, the traffic flow from five hundred onto Geneva is, uh, beyond capacity. We've already had traffic studies say that. So then, until that road goes through, it seems like we'd be dumping more traffic onto five hundred.
Well, the Wheatgrass Lane will, will be completed as part of this, this last phase, so people will be able to go over it to Anderson Boulevard.
Well, they'll be able to go that way, but they'll also be able to come on to five hundred.
They will, and, and, and until that's the end, that, that's just something we're going to have to live with. We are working with UDOT on a, a signal that will go here at Anderson Boulevard and seven hundred North. We're just trying to get the deeds for the north side, and then UDOT's prepared to put that signal in. So that, is that traffic congested caused by people leaving, leaving the businesses down in there?
Yeah, I mean, that's all businesses right there. So that whole, that's basically an island, that's the only way out right now is on, from five hundred to, uh, Geneva. And so then that, that just gets backed up really bad.
This one right here.
What's the backup, is it people wanting to make left turns or right turns? Left turns.
And then you got on Geneva, you got people turning on to seven hundred, and that backs up past five hundred during rush hour. So then right now, I mean, I know you got funding for a light right there, but until that funding comes through, then everybody's just fighting traffic, and people in those communities are gonna like, they're gonna wanna go the fastest route, not wave around through all the residential to get to seven hundred, they're gonna take five hundred because.
Seven hundred north going right along here?
That's the fastest route.
There's just seven hundred north along here.
Well, it is unless the traffic's backed up clear to five hundred, which sometimes it is off of seven hundred.
Yeah.
Yep.
And all I can say is it will get better, it's just gonna take a, a little bit more time, cause there'll, there'll be a signal, like I said, at Anderson Boulevard and seven hundred North, and eventually a signal at five hundred North in Geneva, that they've both been funded, we just, it's just taking, taking a little bit longer. So the reality, a lot of those businesses that are down there, once the signal's in, will probably wanna take Wheatgrass Lane to get to that signal, go left, rather than trying to get out on Geneva and then left onto seven hundred, they'll probably utilize that more. Yeah.
But then also, once the light's on Geneva, then it'll clear that up too. So, so I guess what we can say is there's, there's, uh, solutions in the works, and we appreciate our residents being patient as we work on getting those in place. Any other questions or comments on, on this proposal? If there are none, I'll call for a, a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the applicant's request for a preliminary twelve hundred West Road dedication plat, approved with the following conditions, number one through five, listed on the, listed, listed on the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to, uh, item number six on our staff report. This item is a concept review. So as a reminder, a concept review is, is a proposal or a, a thought is being brought before the Commission to get our, our thoughts on it. There will be no vote or action taken on this, this is not an official, uh, request. And this is not a public hearing, but we do like to hear from the public. So we will hear from the applicant, and we will hear, um, some, uh, input from the public. Just be aware that, please, if your comment is the exact same as what's already been voiced, we're not making a vote, so it really doesn't, we don't need to hear it multiple times. Um, so just to make the meeting so it doesn't go super long, would appreciate that, you know, we, we can be brief in our comments and help the Commission understand your concerns as we give our feedback on this concept. So this is a concept review for Thornton Farm, uh, thirty sev- three seventy-four West Lakeview Road. And the applicant, um, for this, um, is Ross Holliday. Is Ross here? Do you, if you want to come forward, and if anybody else that you want to be with you, um, presenting, you can. And then, uh, Mike Florence will present, and then we'll, then we'll take some, we'll take time for the Commission to discuss what we, how we feel and take input, so we can see where we're gonna go.
Councilman, I forgot to, the first gentleman that spoke, I should've had him come speak in the microphone, so.
Okay.
We can get it on, on the YouTube channel, so if we can remind people to, to use the microphone next time, so.
So, so when I do call on you to speak, if you'd come up and use the microphone so that we can get it, um, state your name, would appreciate it, when you go, so.
Uh, Ross Holliday with Landex Development, and we are presenting the concept plan. I don't, I guess, question I would ask is, Michael, do you, uh, packet was circulated, there's been an opportunity to make sure that everybody viewed that, we have just a.
The Planning Commission has not seen this yet, so you'll wanna go.
Okay.
Go through it, but let, let me give a little bit of background, uh, quickly. So, the Thornton property sits here between Gilman Lane and, and Lakeview Avenue, um, just off of, of, just west of State Street. In two thousand and twenty-two, you heard a couple proposals for it. Um, there was a developer named Phil Holland that came through with, I think the Planning Commission saw one proposal, the City Council saw a couple others, uh, that, they were in your packet, let me, I'll go to those really quick. They, they ranged, uh, the first proposal started at seventy units with townhomes and apartments. Uh, then the next proposal he brought, uh, had eight single-family homes and, uh, thirty-two townhomes. And then the final proposal that he brought had, uh, fourteen single-family homes and eight twin-home buildings with, for sixteen units. A cou- couple things about this, this property. One of the things the city has had on its transportation map for a long time is, is to connect four hundred north to four hundred west. Uh, that, that road i- is a, let me make sure I'm saying which type of road it is. It's a major, future major collector road. So it's a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Um, it, it divides the property, um, which does make it difficult to, to develop. It heats up a, a lot of the, the property. Um, and so I, I think that's been part of the issue in, in developing this, um, in the past. But the property is zoned R one twenty for, for currently twenty thousand square foot lots. If there was any changes to be made to that, we would have to go through a zone change plus an ordinance amendment. Um, we'd have to create a zoning ordinance, uh, for this, uh, development if, if, um, you know, got, as it goes down the road, um, for any consideration. So, uh, let's see, so let me make sure I'm covering everything else. Come on, move. So a couple other things with, uh, the property too, that, for the, the city purchased the property, um, where the Fellowship Bible Church is, that's under the old church there. And so be- before that road, that portion of the road could ever, ever go in, the, the city has an agreement with the church that they have to give them a one-year notice. Um, and then the church is responsible, responsible for demolishing that building, and so, um, just a little history on that for you as well, so. And then with Gilman Lane, there'd be, the, where, where that connection goes is, is still up for, um, consideration, but, um, UDOT, if, if four hundred north to four hundred west connection goes in. There'll be a connection that some, someplace put in over to Gilman, then UDOT will want to see Gilman closed. Um, it's, you know, so, uh, traffic isn't going out to State Street from Gilman. The, the businesses would still have access to Gilman out to State, um, but they, but residential traffic would be funneled over to that new connector, uh, road. So with that, uh, Ross has a presentation that he would like to, to give, and let me pull that up.
You, you didn't cover the retention pond. It was another issue.
That's, that's correct, yes. So the, the, the city does have a need for, uh, detention area. With the, with the water that comes from the east of the city, uh, they, they do need an area for detention. Other, the proposals two years ago showed a detention area. Uh, Ross has been meeting with our engineering department to figure out where that could go. He, he's got some ideas as, as well. The, the city would need, really need to evaluate this further. Um, you know, I, ideally, the detention area would, we'd like to see it go on the Cook property. They, they have not been a willing seller. Um, so the city has looked at, you know, other options to, to try and put that detention area in, in the past, and so. But yeah, that is a, definitely a need of the city, so. Any other questions before I turn the time over to Ross?
Thank you. And that's, that really is a bit of the crux of the matter, is the detention, and I think what we, what our effort in presenting this concept plan was first and foremost. Is to see what made sense on the location. There are some technical issues around trying to solve detention. Um, especially with the way the road network is, in essence, already pre-planned to carve right through the middle. And it does create some very real challenges. So we have had meetings with engineering, Public Works. We've had a few of those meetings. We've had, uh, engineers, our, our civil engineering groups have also met with them independently as well. And in that process, it became, uh, obvious to us that, in order to solve that, we need to kind of understand realistically what is possible here on the site. And so where we're coming from, you know, an R one twenty zone to something that would be, um, different lots, a change in zoning. We needed to really understand that first and foremost, and then kind of feel, a little closer. Then we could work on more of the technical issues around drainage. There are a number of solutions that are potentially on contiguous on-the-site plan that you'll see here in just a second. There's some potentially that could work, uh, to the north, across the street, on additional parcel. There is also some discussions within the stormwater master plan of some other areas in the city that also could, um, deal with the needs of detention and retention inside of the city. So not necessarily maybe even on these parcels. But before we began trying to understand what that would look like and the studies and some of the complications of that, we really wanted to bring the concept to say. There's no point in going down that road to solve a technical engineering issue if we do not have the buy-in sufficient to move forward with the concept. So to get, make sure the cart's not in front of the horse, that's why we're here today, in essence. So if we were to go to the next slide, um, that just helps you reorient to the property a little bit. And then, that I, I think you're all familiar with, if we go one slide further. This is, um, currently a layout, uh, that we are working on. This would bring forty-seven, um, home sites. They would all be single-family detached. There would not be any shared walls in this design. It achieves a little under eight units to the acre. Some of these lots are as small as three thousand feet. They're forty-five hundred feet wide. And, um, these would, we call front-loaded.
Forty-five, not forty-five hundred, forty-five.
Did I say forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing that. I don't, I haven't figured out how to do that yet.
I hope so.
So, thank you. Good listeners. Uh, forty-five feet wide, there are a few lots that I believe are actually, um, even closer to forty-three, but they're in a range of forty-three to forty-five feet wide. And what, the type of product that would go on these style of lots, um, I wanted to bring, uh, a, a picture on the next slide. It showcases, um, these are the types of homes, so, you know, still have a preserved driveway for parking, um, two-car garages. You do have, um, closer setbacks to each other, and you have the ability to vary, you know, vary the streetscape a little bit. Some of these, you'll notice, have a little bit of porch protruding forward past the garage. There are some others where, um, like in that top picture in the center. Where the, the porch area is recessed behind the corner of the garage. So it, it gives you the ability to have some variation, a little bit of flexibility. You're targeting homes typically in the seventeen hundred square feet above grade to, uh, potentially as high as twenty-four hundred square feet. But I would, I would, m- the majority of these homes would be closer to the eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet range. And then if we go one further.
That's not counting the garage.
Not counting the garage.
Is that, is the, are these, these pictures here show a long driveway, very, very deep driveway, and it's not that way clearly in this.
It's the way the, the picture gets stretched to fit in here. They, these are typically a twenty-foot driveway from behind, um, behind the edge of that sidewalk line right there. The joint in the sidewalk to the driveway.
So, so we won't necessarily meet the normal setbacks requirements for, in our residential, we have to have narrower setbacks or for the sides and for everything?
Well, that, that's what they would be proposing. Uh, you'd have to consider that in an ordinance amendment, um, but yes, that, these would have smaller front yard setbacks, smaller side yard and rear yard setbacks.
You're asking a good question, so why don't we maybe jump to the next slide? So we wanted you to kind of understand, so this is the aerial photo of the homes I just showed you. And you, you can see the, the effort is to keep a driveway that's sufficient for parking, obviously, and you need twenty feet to accomplish that successfully. But by keeping the home pulled up and the flexibility to pull that porch forward a little bit, or in some cases not, it preserves an effort to give a private backyard. Obviously, what we are continuing to see in the market is, you know, there's an ongoing demand for, for homes that, um, that, that still have a, a, a bit of privacy back there in that backyard. And so the side yard, some of those pictures, you'll see the side yards look a little disproportionate, um, but the more typical setback in these homes would be. You're about, you're in the eight to ten feet between the homes. You're typically about a five-foot setback from property line to the edge of the home in each way. And you can technically get a little closer than that. There's, there's some, um, some ways to deal with that in construction, but what we would be requesting is typically a five-foot side yard setback.
On both sides.
On, on both sides.
And what's your tip, I mean, I guess with these lots, what, what would your typical backyard be? You know, how, how, how deep or what, just, just a, on average?
Yeah, our effort would be to maximize that. In, in some cases, it, it could be from the back of the house, could be below twenty feet. At, at an absolute minimum, we believe that there's, there's about a, a twelve to fourteen feet i- as a minimum.
From the house to the back.
Right.
Yard, that back fence or whatever.
Correct. So, like I said, the, the picture here, this is not an exact representation. This is just trying to show the type of home, the kinds of faces and facades that would be on these homes. It's also to show that, you know, um, the rear yards, in some of these cases, you'll see, depending on some of the houses, some, some go further, you know, than others. The other thing is that we would have these be all fenced at the time of construction, so it wouldn't be a, that the, the homeowner has the right to do it. These homes would be approved and built with, with the fencing at the time of housing completion.
And pricing, where you are, where, given the lot size and the size of the home, they're not huge lots, what are you looking at for, for pricing? What are your, so, keep, keep in mind that this could be a year out, right, because of the tear-down of the church and?
Well, we could actually, if we were approved and proceed the road, we could build the road to the edge of that, and while the, the notice period with the church was going. Then the city would have the ability to remove that and connect the road. We would just have to build to the edge. So it's not that we would have to wait the full year, per se, and I would assume that the city is not going to want to give that notice prematurely. They're gonna wanna know that we've moved forward and we have commenced construction and that it's imminent, right? Um, so, um, we would, we would take that right, right to that property boundary at that time.
So pricing?
So the effort of pricing, eh, I'm, I'm gonna give a bigger range than I would normally like to. I mean, the dream is to be in the, in the low five hundred thousand dollar range. The reality is we're, we're probably pushing in the, somewhere between the, the five seventy-five to six twenty-five price point. And, um, which is the result of all the factors that I'm sure many of you are, are very aware of. The ongoing inflation materials, it's a combination of land cost, development cost, and, and, and quite frankly, it's also having to place a much wider, um, road network. To accommodate that traffic of which our neighborhood, quite frankly, we're solving an impact that are, that is above and beyond what our neighborhood is actually bringing, so to speak. It's, it's actually, a lot of times you can bring a development project forward and you're creating the greater impact. In this case, the city's need for the road network is, is probably creating a disproportionate impact back on us to be able to get a configuration, get a layout that works. And we're trying to obviously offset that with the smaller lot size for unit count in large measure, and more importantly, to try to drive those home prices down. The best way to do that is to obviously build, build a smaller home.
Because we gave you, because of the larger, wider roads, this picture up here, which I realize isn't, isn't representative of what's gonna happen, has sidewalks on one side, or is this a sidewalk on both sides situation in yours?
It, it would, um, we have not, I would say we've not really determined that yet. I don't believe we would be sidewalk on both. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to show this. Is that it would most likely be, um, if it is, I'll, I'm being, there would not be a park strip, let me say that.
Okay.
It's so, but I cannot, I would not be prepared today without finalizing that layout, without finalizing some of these engineering issues, to say. But it would certainly be a sidewalk on one side. I don't know if we could achieve the sidewalk on the other side as well. Which is pretty customary on lots of these sizes, that you usually do not have a sidewalk on both.
Is your purpose for sale, you're not, your company's not looking to use these as rentals? You're, you're building these to sell them?
This is a for-sale product, yes, to be built and sold to the public at large.
Do, are you building it too or just developing it?
We, we have a, a, an affiliate company that would, would more than likely be building the homes on here, and that's Element Homes.
Okay, do you, do you think this would be set up as a homeowners association?
Well, it'd depend on whether the road networks were private or not. If they were not private, we would not have a need to from a road standpoint. This gets back to the issue of drainage and the management of, of drainage and how that would play out, whether or not that falls back to the city's purview. If we don't have a lift, if we don't have a pump, then there's really, in this case, there wouldn't be a need to. Everybody would have their own private, um, yards that they would maintain on their own. There, there really wouldn't be a need to.
Have you found with other developments like this, you know, the similar product that, that are sold, are they mainly bought as the personal residence of most of these people? Or are they bought for, bought as rentals? Um, you know, not that you're keeping them for rentals, but what's, what's usually the end use of these most of the time? Or is it, I can, maybe I could see too where someone would buy it as a starter home, and then as they move on, then they turn it into a rental. I don't, I, I just wondering if you've had any, um, experience with this type of product and what typically happens?
We, we would market and target people wanting to buy and move in the home, right? This is, uh, this is an effort at, at, you know, creating, i- i- it feels silly to call it attainable housing, but, but unfortunately, in our new reality at this price, price point, this is in the definition of what is big attainable housing. So I think a lot of people plan when they buy them, have the dream that, well, they're gonna keep it as a rental and move up. The sad reality is with the level of inflation that we have experienced in housing in a decade is, most people do not have the ability to then not utilize the equity. The, the, the increases in that home to then go buy their next home. It, it's a pretty rare exception that someone can keep this as a rental and then have the sufficient ten, twenty percent to buy a home, which five and six years later is, you know, considerably more expensive than today's price. So I think a lot of people plan on that. They, they would, they like the idea of it. In, in truth, it's very rare that it occurs on small, single-family. You see that a little bit more in townhomes, um, and some other products, but in a standalone, single-family home, um, it, it's a reality that, that doesn't, it doesn't happen very often. But to be clear, this is not a build-for-rent community. This is not, you know, where this would be built as a block of homes, um, with the direct intent to only lease them.
Right. The, the question comes, you know, let's say twenty years from now. Look, you know, say eighty percent of them are, are owner, owner occupied to start with, you know? What do you think that percentage would be twenty years from now? Do you think, you're, you're saying, from what you're saying, you're probably saying still seventy-five or something percent would be?
I honestly would probably be bold enough to tell you I have no idea. Because if I went back, if I went back ten years ago, Wall Street did not buy single-family homes.
That's true.
Buy them now, and they buy them in bulk, and they own a few. Buy them now, and they buy them in bulk, and they own a few million homes in this country. And so that was completely unforeseen less than a decade ago. So I, I, I don't know that I could argue what it would be. I just know that there is a tremendous demand to have homes at this price where people don't have to have a shared wall, can have an element of privacy in that backyard. And, um, in, in our current interest rate environment and the forecasted interest rate environment, this is still very difficult for a lot of people to buy this home at this price. I mean, this is the best effort to do this. I don't know how to really get the home a lot smaller. I don't know how to shrink the garage. We don't know how to shrink the driveways in, in a four season climate where, you know, we're, we're, we're not in an area like there is in other parts of the country where, you know, you, there is no garage. You just park outside in front of the home and things like that. I mean, we, the market here requires, wants and desires to be able to have, to have that, that garage condition. And so, this is about as small and attainable as we can get. And so that's, that's the presentation on the concept is that, is to get guidance on this because there are some real challenges to the engineering here. And there's really not, um, a lot of effort to try to go solve those, to go and say, okay, this is now solved, but if there's not an appetite and a willingness to support homeownership and taking a more attainable approach to a detached, single family home.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Let's take a moment to get our first, uh, thoughts from the commission, and then we'll see if the public would like to add something to what we have. So, any comments from the commission?
I think London's lacking this type of housing. Um, we don't have, we don't have this type of housing really available for those young families to start and get, and get in there. I question the density a little bit. It's a little bit, it's a little bit much. Um, I like the concept. I do like, I am concerned like you regarding the rentals, and I know I've seen some, like townhomes, for example, they do have an HOA, and the HOA will prohibit, will only allow a certain percent to be rent, become rentals. Um, I don't know how enforceable that is. Maybe the real estate, somebody who has a little bit more, more experience in that would know. I know, but I, I've, my daughter lived in a place like that, that you, you couldn't just say, I'm gonna sell my house and rent it. You had, you had basically apply for a slot to do it that way, but.
Okay, any, anybody else that would like to?
I, I know that there is, you know, at some point, and I'm not sure that this is it, but at some point, you know, families will have to be able to get smaller homes on smaller lots to be able to get into those homes. But I, I do know that when we've discussed this property before, that the, the council has been quite opposed to changing the, changing, uh, these lots, changing the zoning on these lots right in the heart of the city, right in the heart of the, uh, you know, the R120 zone. So I, that concerns me. From what you said, also concerns me that it, it sounds like the because this property is so expensive to develop that the price of the homes, the lots, all those kinds of things, that, that is being passed on to the consumer somewhat because of the cost of the property to develop in this area. Is that, is that not accurate?
It always is. The consumer always pays the full bills.
And so that concerns me that, you know, if the goal is for people trying to get into first homes, trying to get into affordable homes, that kind of thing, for, for us to create something that would be, you know, an expensive property passed on to them that would make it less affordable for them if they were to buy a different product in a different area. That concerns me.
Yeah, I, I under, I, I agree. I agree there. I also think that we have to take into account that we are requiring this wider road in through there. So maybe we have to give the builder a little latitude to make this work. If, but that, I mean, is there any discussion of the, the lower left corner of those properties that ended up being retention pond, losing, losing a few properties? Has, is that one of your options, or?
Yeah, there's, um, and you'll see here on the concept plan, you'll see another area hatched out across the street. We've, we've explored, um, which is also owned by the same family. In our initial conversations, we weren't talking about that, but we've had to try to be extremely creative. One of the, there's three or four options that we're looking at as it relates to, uh, holding the stormwater. That is one potential. Right now, it's, it's a little difficult to determine which of these is the first, second and third priority. So, yes, I mean, we, we've got different types of solutions there. But before we can create those, it gets, without, it gets extremely technical as to, you know, a lot of people don't understand that you move a pipe by just two and three degrees. You can, by the time you get to the other side of a piece of property, you can, you can be a few feet of difference. And so before we feel like we can solve that, we just, we, we, we need to be able to understand what is possible. And then we'll, we'll figure that out a little bit. And, and like I said, without belaboring the point, there have been numerous conversations and at all levels within the city, Public Works and Engineering have been very proactive and involved in this. They have a desire to have this, you know, meet the needs for, for transportation and whatnot. The, the other, you, you could, the other choice is to keep the detention on the property. You're probably removing somewhere in the neighborhood of six of the home sites.
Down in the left corners?
Well, it could be in the corner. It could be anywhere. It depends. This becomes the issue of, you know, along that, that Gilman Road there, on the north side of the property, you, you probably would need a surface area that, that could cover the, you know, the surface area of, of probably up to about six of them. So instead of 47, you know, you would, you would come down to about 41.
But do we have, don't we have detention ponds in the city here that are you, that we, we have them, but they're, they're grassed, they're used as a park, as a green space? I don't see any green space spelled out in here. Is there any way we can get a little bit of both?
Potentially. We've discussed that going to the north across the street. How do we do that? And a lot of this gets back to when we've met with the engineering department and Public Works is there's a, there's a drainage ditch that runs just to the west of this property, and we've got to be able to, to have access to that. And potentially, there's also some drainage. We've literally had to pull up maps and expand out. There's, there's actually some room on the east side, um, with a little bit of planning, but actually, I guess be not that far from right back here, actually. So there's some places to do it in existing park areas that are actually not contiguous to the property. There's the ability to do it on adjacent parcels, and there's also the ability to do it on the property. Like I said, a lot of that just gets down to prioritizing the plan and working with engineering and Public Works to see exactly what's needed. There, there's been an update to the city's, um, Stormwater Master Plan. And as such, there's some analysis going into that with city staff. And that will drive some of where that would go, you know, in, in a final design.
Ralph?
Quick question. I mean, you know, we're, we're zoned at 20,000 square foot lots right now. And we're looking at 3,200 square foot lots. Are you doing that to get it to pencil out, or? Can, I mean, the obvious answer to that is yes, but does it pencil with quarter acre lots?
No, not at all. And the biggest driver is the road network. So when you start with a box or a square, it's orthogonal. You have the ability to get some efficiencies in the lot design, but when you go through a curve running right through the middle of it, it's extremely difficult. That already creates a, a set amount of kind of inefficiency, if you will, in your layout. So that, that's probably, that's the first factor. The second factor is the smaller lot size is not just trying to, to pencil it. It's what the market is screaming for. Right? I have four children, right? I have, my children are ages, you know, 13 through 24. My wife is, says to me all the time, you're a builder, you're a developer, and I'm not quite sure how our children are supposed to buy homes independently on their own.
They're screaming for half acre lots and quarter acre lots.
Yeah.
And these two, but they're screaming for housing.
Well, that's right. They, they, what they want is, is they don't wanna live in your basements. I can tell you that. They love you, but they don't wanna live in your basements. And I don't want my children in my basement for lots of reasons. So this is a direct effort. This is, this is personal to, to us. So unfortunately, to your question, yes, it is the way that it pencils, but it's also what the market wants, and I think that's what's important. What the market really wants is these to be single family homes. It would cost 475, but that ship sailed and it's not coming back to port. It's, it's just not gonna happen. So under, you know, if you were to go across the street just east of there, there are townhomes in the 20, luxury townhomes in the 2,200 square foot range selling in the mid, you know, mid $600,000 range. I think the fact that we can have a product without a shared wall with an element of privacy on a small lot and a small home and trying to even get close to this target, right, of, of, of being, you know, slightly below $600,000 to slightly above is, uh, would be a real win. I, I would, if you, there's one, I think there may be a final slide on there, and let me just make sure. Yeah, you know, we, we kind of brought this up a little bit. You know, the city has a need for traffic. The city has a need to deal with stormwater. We have a need to deal with stormwater, even on our site. I, I think the smaller product actually does some justice, buffering to some of the, the homes that are on the larger 20,000 foot lots. You know, I, I think, I think we're hearing the voices of constituents in all cities across this state that want to figure out a solution around housing. Right? To make some way that, that more people will have this opportunity in the future. We believe in a single family product home design, this is our best effort. Are there nuances that can be adjusted and tweaked? Sure. But, but not wholesale changes. It will require lots of a much smaller size. And so,
Just want to say that as, the dilemma that we face as a commission and as a city council is that all the studies that we have done with our residents without a doubt want larger lots. They don't wanna go to the smaller lots. So the, the situation that we're faced with is do we want to abandon what we've done and what London is and accept these smaller, very small, 45 foot frontages, where right now it's a hundred foot frontage? This product, and if we, if we keep approving them, where do we stop? Is it a slippery slope and we just do it everywhere? Do we just abandon what we are? So that's the, the dilemma that we're faced with.
Yeah. The, the, the hard pill that everybody, we're all having to process, right? It takes a hundred plus thousand dollar combined income to buy these homes. With interest rates today at 7%, you have to have a combined income of between a hundred and to $120,000. That's what we're calling attainable now. And so when we, when we then push up and raise the house of a price another two, $300,000 and we get up into something that is closer to that quarter acre lot, you're now talking about people having to make $225,000. And if you look at the average income in the city of London, it's not $225,000. So then you run the risk of a city that turns over, schools go dark, kids don't live there, right? Because we don't, and you wait till things go to a regentrification and a reset. Or we could just plan out some, some layers of the onion that work at some different price points. I do know this, there is a lot of people with a desire for the larger lots, and I, and I understand that. We hear that too. But when push comes to shove, most people are recognizing it's just not something in their financial reach to do. They want them, but they can't make them happen. So.
It's not always the size of the lot, it's the density. Residents are a little
Sure.
concerned about.
Yeah. I understand that.
Do we have more comments?
I just have a question for Mike. Mike, is there anything that prevents, this clearly shows two roads going up to Gilman Lane, and we're shutting them off there. We're gonna force all the traffic across Gilman Lane, which I'm guessing is a vast reason why a lot of these people are here. Is there anything that prevents, in a city, that would prevent those from going up into a cul-de-sac? Since it is a major, big, wide artery coming down into there, you know, that, that big curve there, it seems like that could facilitate dead end cul-de-sac lots, which would then relieve a lot of the concerns of the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, our trans, sorry, our transportation plan, let me pull that back up. It does show one connection going over to, to Gilman, so, you know, that's been in our plan for quite a long time, and so we, we would want to see one connection over there. Now, whether you need two or not, you know, we, that, that's something that, you know, we can still discuss and, and talk about.
Where would the state want Gilman closed?
Why?
Where?
Oh, I, I would imagine somewhere around here where the Wild Oak Reception Center is. You know, force all the commercial traffic to State Street.
So the Wild Oak traffic can go out State Street?
Yes. I don't know. We, we'll have to figure out how that's designed, but, yeah. Commercial traffic go to State or go, or connect it over to the, you know, the 400 North, 400 West Street.
But the desire for that connection up there is merely because the city's plan has it there. Was there?
Has it, it's good to have connections, you know, especially if Gilman's closed and people can't get in. They need to have a connection over to, you know, you know, cause Lakeview's their other option. So, but, but Lakeview, they'd have to go clear down to, what is that, 800 West or, and, and then back up, so.
Just to give you a little history on that, for many years, that connection wasn't on there. In fact, it, it decided, it was decided to get on there after the, the Bible Church built their building. They were given a building permit, built there, and then all of a sudden the city decided, well, what, what did we do here? We need a road to go through there. And so it's not always been on the road master plan, and, and then that burden was pushed off on the Thornton family to basically eventually deal with what they're dealing with right now, which is a large sweeping road that goes through there. That has always been my understanding that, that the city would participate in the extra cost of a major road going through there. Shouldn't it, so I don't know if you're thinking that's your cost, but that's not. That extra width, you're not gonna be required to do any more than a normal street that would go through a R120 subdivision. Are you, do you understand that?
Well, yeah, the city will participate in six, in 16 feet. Now, that road though, Mike, has been on.
It's been on there for 20 plus years now.
Been on there since 60. Been on there since 68.
That Bible Church was built after 68.
Yeah, well, I'm just showing you this map, this...
Yeah, it was on there, and then it went off of there. That's why they let the church be built there. So it wasn't, there was a long, there was a long period of time that it wasn't on there after 68. Anybody here can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, I think I'm right.
The definition is if it's a system improvement, right? Anything that's incremental that the city has to participate in.
Exactly.
Correct.
So just my opinion, I guess, is I like the smaller lots. I like the product, the detached product. I think that's a win for the city and a win for people in that price point. I would like to see some quarter acre lots on the perimeter of that that are not going to be, have frontage on the busy road, because I think that road is going to be busy. There's a lot of challenges that we're hearing you. I think there's a really tough pill to swallow for the owner of that property. And is that property just not worth what that family may think it's worth? And so that's why it's not penciling. And so that's, so I just feel like there's this burden on the city to accommodate their sales price. And I think that's where you're going to get the pushback is... So I would really like to see, I think quarter acre lots would definitely be in demand. I think those are not starter home lots. I think a quarter acre is plenty big to come in and build a custom home. It might be that family's second or third home, and so they're bringing equity into it. I think that would be a very nice product. I know you guys want to maybe build those, but I think those are attractive to people that are going to spend $800,000 on a construction project. And so I would love to see a little bit more of a transition there between the half acre to the quarter acre and then getting, getting down to some of these patio-style lots. But again, it goes back to, I think, the cost of the dirt. And I think that's a tough pill to swallow for the seller, but somehow or another, they got to wrap their heads around that.
I think one of, the drivers of cost right now is development costs are literally up about 30% in less than, you know, three and a half, four years. The cost to develop a lot, regardless of lot size, is just, you know, cost of pipe, cost of asphalt. All those things are a large contributing factor. Certainly, there's a portion in the land. And that's, that's a big piece of it. But quite frankly, it's, if, the whammy on this is, is primarily, you know, an unoptimized design, right? It's not a farm field where you have nice straight streets and you can get nice, easy cul-de-sacs and things of that nature. So it's the development cost, it's the requirement to design around a curve. It's a lot of those things. So this is our effort of being creative. I, I think in fairness, this is a little, this is a lot less about the Thornton's sales price. You know, they, they obviously want to maximize their opportunity. But it's, we just have so many factors kind of competing against affordability right now and attainability. And to your point, it's a factor. I'm not going to say it's not a factor. But sometimes that's the biggest factor, and sometimes it's the only factor. Right now, we've just got, we've got a lot going on, on this site. But there's an opportunity here to do something that we think is meaningful. Can we get to it, I guess, is the question.
Mike, do we know that when this, when the cities came along and said, "We're going to put this, this is on our master plan. We want this connector to go through here." At that time, what type of discussion was entered into the Thorntons?
I don't know. That was way before me.
Does anybody have any history on that?
I'm sure Mr. Thornton may have some comments on that.
That's a pretty big...
I can tell you, they were not hap, Gary's dad was not happy about this. And he can correct me if I'm wrong, but he knew what it was doing to the property. And nobody was happy about it. I can tell you that. I don't think that...
I think when the property, it was, the city was devaluing, in their mind, their property quite a bit.
So there was no agreement at that time with the Thorntons?
No.
Not that I, not that I understand.
I think Mike and I are the longest Linden residents here and not that we're, not that we're aware of with that. Let me just, I've kind of waited to hold my comments, and I want to hear from the public. I'm kind of in a unique situation. I live at the top of a property that was controversial and went, had those townhomes and homes that went in at the end of my street. You know, some, brought 70-something new units on a, what was that, an 80-acre property? I think so, you know, about 10, 10 per unit or per acre. And we had the concerns. I mean, we live on Locust Avenue and 570, which is a busy, busy road. And I'll have to tell you, we have not seen the traffic that we worried and pined about and, and thought would ruin our, our quiet little street. Actually, most of our neighbors now actually do go down to State Street. We don't even see them come up to Locust. We, and it, it's not fully developed yet. It might, it still might have lots of traffic. But as a, as a concern, you know, for people, I was very concerned about that. Honestly, the biggest factor and the people that were the worst were the construction people. They were asked not to go down our road, and they continually had big trucks. And that, that was, that was the bigger problem than, than now the residents coming up and down our road. And those, call them affordable, I don't, I wouldn't call them affordable, but people, I mean, that's what's affordable, right? Those townhomes and those small homes have brought wonderful families into our neighborhood. People that couldn't afford to come to Linden otherwise. So, and I, you know, I still wish those were half acre lots. I mean, you know, that's what Linden's about. I would love for those to be half acre lots. The only point that I think would have been better is if there could have been a little bit better transition right next to the half acre lots. And I don't know if that's possible with this one or not. But, you know, we've, they, at least they're single-family homes next to the half acre lots. But it would have been nice if those could have been quarter acres down to the small, you know, just at least maybe even one quarter acre home. So a home that, there is one home that's right next to the half acre lot that's really making them feel like their privacy has totally been invaded by the way they're building it. And they're not putting trees in, and they're not, they're not doing things that way. That would be my one concern, you know, you are bordering, looks like just two, maybe the little tiny corner of a third of those half acre homes. That, that's just something to consider is how to try to make that transition feel these people who've come to Linden who have half acre homes, and this is their dream. And they always thought that what was right next to me was going to be a half acre. Trying to make that transition. But I agree. I have, I have kids from 26 to 14, you know, that's where my kids are. You know, they can't even afford a condo in Provo right now. You know, I mean, they're, it's ridiculous to try to find any place to live. And so I do think the market is, I mean, I guess being long with Commissioner Marchbanks, we've been here in Linden for a long time. And when we were kids, a little bit of country didn't mean half acre lots. That's something that's been developed, and it's become very culture of the people who have moved in here and, and have built on half acre lots. That's been the, the way the property values have been high. It's a great community. You know, there's been a lot that's been that. But there is, you know, I, I see a need for something like this. The lot size and how close they are, does it give me a little heartache? Yes, it does, but I don't, I don't know how else to make this property work. Once they said that that road had to go through, I mean, I, I'm just, if that was my land, I, you know, and to have a land, have a road put through. The Thorntons have owned that property in their family longer than, than any road ever was imagined to go through that. I mean, you go back, that, you know, I mean, it's probably been on the plan for a long time, but that, that's quite a burden to put on someone and then to, you know, say, "Well, then all you can do is build these homes that are unattainable." And so the only way that I see that road ever going through, which I think is a need to the city, is eventually the city's going to have to pay for it. Or if they're going to demand half acres on that, eventually the only way to put that road through, because I don't think it'll ever happen, I don't think you could pencil it out. Someone, someone's not going to come in and take a huge loss, you know, to put half acre. I don't even know if you could build half acres on there with, and put the road in and make it pencil ever. And, you know, I just don't think, I just don't think it's possible. And, you know, like I said, I, I'm all for Linden's values, but I think it's time to start looking at, especially these very unique pieces. And what it'll bring to our city, what type of residence, you know, these young families. I mean, our, our area had, had grown, had kind of developed out. We all came together, and now we're all getting to be my age, which I feel like I'm old now, you know? And I don't want to mow a half acre anymore. I don't. I mean, my wife and I are out there like, "How are we going to cut the garden down? How are we going to redo our sheds so we can have a riding lawnmower?" You know, all the things that, that come with, with half acres. Our kids are all leaving, and there's just absolutely no way that, they probably will end up living in our basement if we don't find some other way. You know, I have a son that's graduating, and that was his plan. And we said, "No, we're going to try to help find," you know. He says, "Well, the only place I know where to come back is to come live with you, because I don't know where to buy a house. I don't know where to go." So, so, you know, I, I, do I love it? I can't say I love it because I wish we could do something else. But I don't know if it's, if anything but something like this is possible. And now that I've had my turn, anything else from the commission? And then I think would like to hear from the residents for a little bit.
Steve, just one comment on that. It's interesting to hear you make those comments because they were so completely opposite when that development went in. But we did, if you can remember, when that development went in, it was completely townhomes. We did require an extensive transition, you know, from the homes.
And my only point there is it would have been nicer to make the transition one more step. I mean, if it could have gone townhomes, small homes, and then quarter acre, just even one or two quarter acres, that would have been dream. You know, that would have made it so much better.
It was doable though, because it was in the commercial zone.
Yeah, and so, so that's my only thing there. But actually, looking back at what that brought in, I know we'll hear a lot, and let me tell you, I was one of them. And I worried about, a lot about traffic and how it's going to be people. I, I worry about Gilman Lane and traffic. But honestly, my road's a little road, and people are going to go the easiest way to the big road. And honest, there's not a light, but they'll go down through that development and go onto State Street at where there's not a light at certain times of day, because it's quicker than going up and around and to the light. And it, it hasn't been the problem I thought it would be. Now, will it be eventually if State Street gets so busy they can't get on unless they go to a light? It could. I'm not saying it's not going to be eventually a problem, but, but it has brought great young families to revitalize an area that's kind of missing that. And so that's, that's one thing I'd say. It's, it's an area that's missing that. And I think eventually Linden might miss a bunch of young families if we don't provide something for them. Okay, anything else from the commission? Okay, well, it's not a public hearing, and we don't want to take all night, but we would love to hear some comments from the public so that we, because I'm sure the developer would like to hear some of the concerns and, and concerns of the public, so...
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll sit back here so people can come up.
If you'd raise your hand, we'll call on you, and you can come up, okay? And would you please state your name so we can get you in the record?
And while he's walking up, I did receive emails today from Minta Valentin, John and Rochelle Ellis, and Angie Neworth. So I'll just hand these out to you. There's three of them. They're all the same, and so you can pass them out and have those.
Hi, my name is David Holbrook. I'm, I'm the property that has the smallest strip cornering there to the west.
Can you point to that, Mike?
That has that little strip. Yep, that one.
That's you, okay.
Yep, yep. So I would echo the transition plan. I'm not going to, I think that's been expressed. This obviously does not have any transition. Like to see sidewalks as we route to get to, I'm, I'm not saying that every street has to have a sidewalk, but having walkable for getting, you know, talk about long-term, that's a light, is a transit hub. Having people to safely get, so that's feedback for the developer. The other is that event center is kind of a problem with this for the residents and this dynamic. We get a lot of traffic and a lot of cars that park. And a lot of that overflow park is the church. And so there has to be an insured connection with that event parking and potentially walkable route to the church for that overflow parking for the event center so that that parking doesn't end up in that neighborhood or the neighborhoods to the west. I liked, there was a comment over here, someone can repeat it, but does Gilman have to go through? Are the residents okay with going down Gilman and around a lake view to get out if that means that it kind of closes off that neighborhood? I'm kind of in the middle there, but it'd be interesting to see if others, their opinion is on that. And then the last comment was the, I know that there was talk, and I'm not sure where it went, with the adding a light by Taylor Drug. And my question is, is if that, I don't know if that's gone or if that is going to happen. Does this have to go through if there's another light that routes traffic out of this area? Does this have to go through? That does mean that I drive farther to get off on State Street, right? I'm not sure what other residents would think about that, but just something to throw out there, so... That's all I had.
So with that, you're saying the light there that would go, that would go on that, that bottom road, right, where Taylor Drug, that...
Yeah, I'd have to take, yeah.
Because you'd go through, you'd have to go through the elbow and up through the,
Right.
what used to be Lakeview Drive, but now it's, yeah, but now it's been zigzagged.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We've been meeting quite a bit with UDOT and UDOT's preference. So that, the UDOT's preference is to have, if we have a light here, then not have, well, we have a light here, but their preference is for the road to go through so we don't have to have a light there at 200 North.
Okay.
You know, they, they see a lot of issues with that, and so that, that's, that would be the preference is to have it go through here.
Is there, is there any talk from, from what he said? If, if the city were to take this off the master plan, would UDOT move that light?
Well, it's warranted at 200 North.
If, if, if there wasn't, okay.
Yes.
So I guess that's, in the realm of, of thought, that's, that's there. But it's not, it's not what the city currently has planned.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to come up? If you can, and state your name, so that just, more so we get your name spelled correctly.
I'm Lori Esteban, and I live on Gilman Lane. And first, I want to start off by telling the Thorntons that, sorry, I'll get emotional here because I'm kind of a fall baby, but we love them and we want them to be able to benefit from the sale of their property and have that, you know, that privilege like everyone else has had when they've sold their property in Linden. I think that it's kind of a unique property, and it's a little unfair that there is that road that has to go through there. And I feel that it, I'm going to echo what someone else says. I think that it should be maybe the cost of the city, which would make it a lot more easier to develop. I, we, we do have a big problem with that reception center, which has been mentioned. I'm going to mention it again just because the closing of Gilman Lane, where it sits, and where that road comes out that you're requiring to come out onto Gilman Lane, needs to be above that closure. So that the traffic coming from the reception center is not going to be coming up Gilman Lane, filtering through there to come and go. It, it's just a dangerous situation for that traffic to be going on. to come and go. It, it's just a dangerous situation for that traffic to be going on to State Street. It is so dangerous that I drive literally to eight hundred west to access State Street, no matter where I'm going, so that I can get to a light. And it's still because those people, even with that sign, they are still making left-hand turns off of State Street going northbound. And it, I mean, a weekly occurrence that I almost get taken out trying to make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn. It is just very difficult. So it'd be very helpful if that traffic could go from the reception center over and connect to four hundred, so that it just makes State Street more safer. You start adding another couple hundred cars right there. I can't even imagine how many wrecks will be occurring if they're still having to come out off of State Street. We just, we witness it way too many times in the last thirty years of living there.
Wait a minute.
So.
That's a little cloudy.
So you want the traffic from the reception center to go out State Street?
Well, the problem that you have is most people use Gilman Lane coming westbound, I mean, coming eastbound up our road, or they come down. So if the traffic is still gonna be coming off of four hundred and allowed to come down Gilman Lane below the closure to the reception center, it would just be better in my mind. I would much rather drive all the way around to Lakeview and go up to four hundred to access a light than I would to still have all that traffic, because they will, they will be using Gilman Lane still.
Who will be?
The people coming, so it's quite interesting. I'll go back to when, yeah.
What I, the question I'm trying to get is, we've got traffic from the reception center, and we've got traffic from the residents who would be here if this is built.
Yes.
And my understanding was you wanted the traffic from the residents to go out fourth north to State Street, but not the traffic from the reception center.
No, I would like to, yeah, I, I would like to see the road closed below the road coming off of four hundred onto Gilman.
The proposed road.
Yeah, the proposed road. Right now, there's two. Yeah, yeah, west of it. So that it's just our neighborhood and the neighborhood west of us that is using that area to access our homes, because if that traffic from four hundred, so when the road was, was when Lakeview Road was dog-legged, we saw a significant, there's three times a day that that traffic comes through there to access the west side. And it's, it's significant. I can be outside at eleven o'clock at night, and it's a steady stream of twenty, thirty cars all going still to go to the to the freeway. And so not always are they gonna turn to go, you know, over to four hundred if they're still living down our way. So that, on that west side of us. So that's why, it's like, I would rather see that road, you know, ended. So it's just our area that uses that Gilman Lane, because it's too narrow. That road's too narrow and no sidewalks.
If Gilman Lane was closed west of this development, so this development, you know, would, would that be, how much of an inconvenience would that be to all the people on Gilman Lane to not be able? I mean, so now, 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 you've gotta go back and around, you know, instead of just out to State Street.
Well, would it impede emergency services, too? I, I would think it would impede ambulances and fire.
That was brought up last time, and I thought, well, couldn't they just even install a gate where emergency services have a remote, like a code that could open that automatically if it needed to be opened? It's not like it has to be brick walled, or it just needs to be closed and still be able to have access if maybe they need to come down and do construction, or you know, you do have the ditch there. You know, there's other ways of doing it without it being such a permanent thing that would impede on that safety, but I think still allowing that much traffic coming east to westbound, there's still gonna be a lot of traffic on a little road that cannot handle it, and it, it's very dangerous out there to even go out to get your mail or do anything. And I think, too, if it's not dead-ended, and that traffic from the, the reception center can go over safe, in a more safer manner, you're still gonna have the same dangerous intersection right there being that, that Gilman Lane creates with that light right there.
So, this, I'm just looking at this map, and if, if, if I'm right, doesn't the top road almost come out right across from the reception center driveway? Is that, is that the reception center, that little narrow?
Yeah, so there's, there's one almost straight across from it.
Almost straight across from the reception center, right.
And one below it.
So if, if Gilman Lane was closed just east of that.
Up the reception center?
So, so the reception center, so the reception center then still has access to Gilman Lane, which is probably a problem, but if they had direct access to this road. So the easiest way to go is on this little road, straight in and out, and then to four hundred to a light. Do you think that would reduce the problem? Because now, the easiest way is off State, I mean, a light off State Street down, and then to turn right, right, and to go straight into the reception center. Would that, do you think, this concept, just in my mind, I think, well, from the natural flow of traffic, no longer is GPS taking them down and around and through, through Gilman Lane and through the old, right? It's gonna take you to four hundred north, you're gonna turn off State Street right onto this road, and then go right into the reception center. Now, if they don't have enough parking, and they're parking on the road and stuff, those are, those are still issues that, that this doesn't address. But I think the traffic flow, a pattern like this, the traffic flow's gonna become more natural to avoid the narrow road, where because of the, there's no other way to get there other than this narrow road, people do take the backroads there. So I, I do think a concept like this actually solves the traffic problem as far as the flow for the receptions that are more.
I think it solves the safety issue where Gilman Lane hits State Street.
Yes, because that can be closed, yes.
That's, that is part of your concern, is
Yeah.
The craziness that happens right there.
But the residences on that little street, that, the future residents, they're not gonna like the fact that four nights a week cars are coming down their street to access the, access the.
And, and, and the, you know, and then they, if there's parking on that street, yeah, when there's a wedding reception, they'll be, you know, I, I mean, there's all those issues.
We already, there already is such a huge parking problem with that reception center. Even though they're told not to park on the road, they still park on the road, and it's so narrow, and and then you take away a lot of their overflow parking by putting that big road through Los Hermanos and, and the church. It, you're gonna take away half of the parking that they have, so where will they park? And then you have this density that you have of this at forty-seven homes. When family comes to visit these people, especially if you have shortened driveways, they're not gonna have a place to park. The roads are so narrow going through there that they're gonna be double parking on those roads. And then where will the residents and the reception center people all park? Because that's where they will be parking. If Gilman Lane is closed, we can solve that issue for us. With a lot of the issues we have with the problem of their traffic, their parking will be solved by the closure of that to our neighborhood. But you are now creating a huge monster of it being in this, this development, because you're losing so much parking with that road going through there.
Thank you for helping us understand.
That's a lot of our concern. I, I, I loved the last proposal that Lyon Homes had, with the, I think everybody was really comfortable with that. Even if it went up to twenty-four homes instead of sixteen, it would not be near the problem. But in talking with a lot of our neighbors, we have two rental, we have several rentals over in a complex in Orem that's an old nineteen seventies complex, that I would much rather see sitting in my neighborhood than I ever would something of this height of density on such small lots. There's bigger parking areas, there's more open green space. I would have given anything to have had that in my backyard instead of that mess we have with the, with the southern development that went in. I would much rather have seen it. So it's not the fact that we don't want families moving in, it's not that we don't want that. We have the development that went across the street that went in of six homes. We, we gained twelve families, not six, because they all have accessory apartments with young couples that can afford to live there. Those apartments, those styles that I'm talking about, like at the Park Avenue, where they're basically a two, they're three levels, but the third one is a a daylight basement-type situation, and they've made such beautiful green space and such usable parking areas. It is much more affordable. We, we could sell those condos over and over again for around three hundred thousand dollars. So, three, three fifty. Much more affordable housing, and I think much more compatible, because you're not dumping near the density into one area and, and making it a little bit more easier. Anyway, that's just my opinion, and I just wanted to express that, and, and, um, but just, I'm just really concerned of the safety issue of, and the parking issues that we're gonna be creating by doing that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any other issues or opinions they'd like to bring up that haven't been addressed?
My name's Brett Cook. The only thing I, I look at is you're making all of us do our new structures ten foot off property line, and you're letting these guys come within five. So that really isn't fair to all of us that's been trying to build something to make us go ten foot. Does that make sense? Kind of, I look at that, like he would say, that's your slippery slide of downsizing the easement on them.
Okay.
So, that's what I say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion.
I have just a quick question. Kevin Gilman, what's the little gray, gray rectangle area up there? I tried to look on it here. I couldn't read it either.
I'm assuming from looking at it, that's, that's a, a private access to those lots. I think that's a, a road to get, like a driveway to get to those back lots.
The hatch, hatch that's hatched.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah.
And it's just dead ends at, at Los Hermanos Parking Lot.
So it, so it would be a access lane for these homes, and they are
Right. And it dead ends at Los Hermanos Parking Lot.
Yeah, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ross, but these would be a rear-loaded unit. Is that what you were talking about, possibly?
They certainly could be.
Yes, and I, I think it would dead end, a fence or something would be there where they, they wouldn't have access to that parking lot. Is that correct? It looks from that.
Yes. Isn't fire gonna give us grief over that, not having a hammerhead or not having a cul-de-sac?
Depends on the length of, of the lane. Now, now, our, our engineering department has looked at this. They sent me quite a few comments today regarding widths of roads that, you know, those need to be studied uh, more, like, for example, this shared access easement is twenty-six feet. That, there, you know, that wouldn't allow for parking on either side of that access because of the fire code. This thirty-five foot road here would only allow parking on one side, I believe. The, they had some other concerns about, you know, roads lining up. Though, these are the technical things that would need to be looked at further as, as we discuss this proposal. You know, they're, they're concerned about homes ba- uh, face, or having driveways out onto this main collector road. They don't want to see that because of the amount of traffic that could be on that, and how, um, how close they are to, you know, to maybe intersections. And so tho- those are just some of the, the concerns they had that will have to be further reviewed, um, if, you know, if we could move forward on something like this.
Okay, any other comments? Um, if not, we'll, um, bring it back up here for discussion, um, with the commission. If there's anything we, anything better we can give to the developer, I think that they're coming here really wanting to know. Should they spend time looking at this, or is this, it's not worth their time? And I'm assuming this concept will go to the city council also.
Yes, uh, next Monday, this, uh, Ross will make the same presentation to the city council on Monday.
And so, um, I don't know how the council feels, whether they want to give, if they feel like they've given their input, or if they, um, want to say how they would possi- I don't know if we want to even take a straw poll. We don't have to. Would it, would it help?
I, I wouldn't mind trying to summarize what I think we're saying to the developer.
Yes.
I think the planning commission is of a spirit to help the landowner sell their land, and we realize half-acre lots are not gonna work there. And I think there's a spirit here to, and has been in the past, that we're open-minded to try and work something out that, that worked for everybody. And, uh, but, I, I, again, I think the bigger battle is, is, again, because this doesn't exist, that we don't have a zone for this right now, is, is getting at least the concept sold to the city council. Because I think we're all realizing all the aforementioned, uh, uh, delicacies of this property and situation that, uh, you know, they're, I, I, we gotta be creative on, on making it work.
Yeah, and I think, uh, to add to that, I think we all have our own little concerns, you know, about any plan that comes, but I think you'll find as a, as a commission, um, I've been, it's been great to work with these, these commissioners, because we'll, we'll, we'll work with you to get a plan, you know, we'll work to make something work. I can't, I can't even guess how the city council's gonna view this. That's, that's their prerogative, and they are, uh, voted into office to represent the citizens, and so they have a, they have a much different burden on their shoulders to, to protect, you know, to, to, to do things for the city. But I think as a commission, I think you've heard what we'd like, I mean, we would love for some quarter acre lots in there, we would lo-, you know, we understand that that might not be possible. But, you know, if you could look at those types of things and, and do those types of things and bring those types of plans to us, I think we'd be very open. Do any of my commissioners disagree with those and say what they want to say?
The one concern I have is that if we change the ordinance, we're not just doing it for this property. We're doing it for the city.
Well, and it's just like the being spot zoned, or we have to look at what the, just, just like we, we, we did the, this is where the, where my memory's not good, the name of the, the ordinance of the, the two properties, the Norton and
State Street Properties.
The State Street, the plan development or
Development Ordnance.
Commercial. We, we zoned those.
Those properties, and we could create a zone that for only, they have to be within so many feet of State Street, or, I mean, you know, there's different, there are different ways we can create this.
Those were little different projects. They were planned unit developments, and this and this not.
Well, what do we call this road? A major collector, we call it, something that's, has a corridor of the major collector street?
Yes.
Allow some lower density.
You know, I don't think we're, I don't think as a city, we're ready to say we're ready for eight, per acre everywhere in the city. You know, I know we're not ready for that, and that's not what the ordinance is gonna be.
E- even though I'm not opposed to considering, you know, some alternatives to this property, I I think several of us have some concerns with it as it is.
Well, I, I agree. I don't think this passes the planning commission or the city council as presented. I just don't think you would get the, the support.
I think we have some concerns with the, I mean, I
I think dens- density is, I think, pretty much unanimous across the commission right now.
Yeah, I loved how the Ivory Homes, the transition that they did, where it had the states and it got smaller and smaller. I think it would be a lot easier to swallow that pill than
Yeah, uh, there's, there's a lot of things that I would like to see happen.
The difference, though, there, you know, we had almost a hundred acres to work with.
That's true.
To design streets to accommodate the flows and the traffic flows, you know. We don't have that luxury on infill property.
That's true. And this is a beautiful area. Honestly, I was like, man, if there was a half acre, I'd be looking at it, but but I know that's not everybody. It's tough.
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm certainly not closed to considering options as far as some s- smaller lots and, and, and smaller homes, but as it's presented, I do, I, I do still have some real concerns, and I, I think several of us do.
Yes. So, any questions that the developer wants to ask us that we can clarify in our, and if you could come up to the microphone so they could hear these questions, just, we're trying to give you as clear a view as we can. We, there are seven different, uh, people here, so.
Right, and, and this is, like I said, information gathering. I first thank you for, you know, expressing your thoughts to us. Try, trying to create a solution under the conditions and the parameters we have to operate. It's a lot easier when you have, you know, a sandbox that allows you to be fully creative. We, we do have some limiting conditions here. The previous submittals had, there were some versions, I think that was in the report. You know, they had some mixed product type and they, I think there may have even been some that had some larger lots that flanked. But they came with either small apartments slash condo type buildings or a kind of a hybrid townhome. What I would like a little feedback on is, as the property adjacent, or say the western flank of this property, i- if, if those were larger lots, um, does, is that, does that really assuage the concern?
For me, it does, and that's what I'm suggesting, is on that west lot and perhaps even along Gilman Lane there, where it's in the interior. Those being a quarter acre lot gets me personally on board and, you know, whether somebody came in and put some townhomes that were going to be, have frontage on that larger ro- on that road, I, I might even be for that. But I do personally like the detached homes that you've co- come with. But, but I'm not, we're not talking about, you know, taking most of this development turn into a quarter acre, at least I'm not. I'm talking about a few lots here on the west side and maybe along Gilman Lane and the rest of them could then transition into these patio type lots.
I mean, this, this is what Mike's pulled up, I don't think we've ever seen. I think this was just shown to the city council, but I think this is something kind of what we're saying, some bigger lots along there.
What was the city council's reaction to this, Mike, we weren't involved?
So you had, you did have three different council members at that time when, when this was reviewed. But they, they, they were, they thought it was still too dense. They, um, at that time, their recommendation was that they didn't want to go less than 12,000 square foot lots, if I remember correctly.
That was a while ago though, right?
Uh, two years ago.
And three couns- three different councilmen?
Yes.
So, that, we can't even guess what they're going to say.
They didn't see it, I don't, well, unless they showed up to city council, they, because I never seen this stuff on I. I wouldn't have had any problem with that myself, but.
I, I think there was still some, some concerns about density at, at that time as well. But, but I, I, I don't remember how many residents showed up to that second council meeting. Because it was over a span of time from like April to July or something like that when they, because that, this was the only one I believe that the planning commission saw, I think, was this one, this top one. And then they presented these two, uh, to the city council, this one and this one.
Yeah, the, the one down below sort of hits everything we've been talking about.
Yeah, it does.
So, straw poll, if that came forward today, would that be approved by the planning commission?
Well, there's a lot of things that go into that, but.
The only question I have, would you continue, those look like, um, duplexes? Would you want to do single family on those? I mean, the lots look like they could do your.
I can't see the width.
They're thirty-five, they're between thirty-five and, most, they're all thirty-five except for the two end ones are forty-five and sixty-eight.
So, let's assume they were not attached, slightly wider lots. Even on Gilman Lane though, still smaller.
Yeah.
If, if, but, but unattached.
What about the detention? I mean, that solves an issue, a, a need for the city that, that's showing there, is that something?
Are we talking about that as well, as you asked that question?
There will, detention will have to get solved either on the property, across the street from the property, or the cities really needs to take ownership of some other places where they actually have available detention and they need to probably just solve the problem where they actually already have space and they own the land to do it. You know, i- if the city is asking, besides the road network, to have us solve a detention problem that's not specific to our use, then the city would end up having to pay and participate in that, obviously. And is that really one of the questions that the city will have to ask themselves is, do we want to come out of pocket and deal with it that way? Or do we have another place inside of the city that would not cost the city? Maybe it's just an, an infrastructure enhancement on existing land they own. That, that would be, you know, we, we're still trying to study that, that is very much one of the flux items.
So, I think maybe your question with whether we're, I think, I think all, most of us would probably, with the detention in there, I think, because it solves so many problems for the, the, the city. Uh, you know, that's one thing, or if those are going to become homes, I think that's what Jared said, that's going to be, that's going to be another thing, but this, this only puts thirty units.
And we would not want to see homes, you know, accessing four hundred north there or four hundred west. You know, we wouldn't want them oriented towards that street, you know, with their driveways, so.
And, and so I guess that's another problem, right? Because all the other, on this plan, everything else accesses a different street.
Yeah, and, and when you say, would the planning commission approve this? We'd have to know all kinds of details about it before we'd know whether we, we would do that or not.
Right. My, my biggest question is this is going from forty-seven down to thirty, could you make that work?
Today, I couldn't answer that question.
And so, so that, that's, that's one.
That's what we're saying too, is we can't answer that just by looking at this, of whether we would approve a plan or not.
I can tell you, this is more favorable, whether we would approve it, but it is definitely more favorable. This is a better starting point for us.
And I like the idea of single family homes instead of those duplexes, like the ones you've been presenting.
And on four hundred, if, if the traffic is going to be as high as it is potentially expected to be as it goes through, cuts through where the church property now is, it, it potentially, um, there could be an offset to have the homes face four hundred and then have the garages in the back. You know, that, that creates a different challenge though. That product then gives you a side yard, not a backyard.
Gives you the back.
And nobody wants the front yard on the busiest road, right? So, how does a family with small children want to feel that right out of their door, they now have a collector road at the front door of their, of their new home? So, the intent of the other plan was to try to get those homes off of four hundred, and keep the yards in the back, and I still think that's a more desirable approach. The, the, the question is, is, and I think you've answered it, is that if there is a buffer, a, a larger lot buffer, whether it hits a full quarter acre or not, I, I don't know. But let's just assume it's something a lot more than three thousand feet. I don't know whether or not it gets to, you know, eleven thousand feet, but if it's, um, but if there was a larger lot buffer along that side, that would be more favorable. And, and I've heard that and we'll take that feedback.
Is there any other feedback, uh, commission would like to give?
So the, the council will hear this Monday night then.
That's correct.
Okay.
We wish you, wish you all the luck and hopefully the council will give you great advice because I, before you, you know, delve in and spend a lot of more time that you can know which direction to go.
I, I think also just may, maybe a, a point of education in what our legislature is thinking for, for all the residents here. But last year, we had a legislator run a bill that would have eliminated any city zoning above forty-five hundred square foot lots. And that bill is then, is also going to be ran again this year. And, and so the, the state is clamping down more and more on cities' control for lot sizes.
And I guess it goes back to, you know, maybe this is what, as the developer says, this is what product is being clamored for right now. Just because it's so expensive, it's, it's so expensive.
Yeah, when the governor comes out and says it's his number one priority for the state of Utah and says that he will personally attend any planning commission and city council meeting invited with lots hitting a certain size, uh, you know, some of you that is blustering, who knows? I don't believe he can make it to all these city council meetings. However, I, I certainly do believe there's an intent here to rectify this or, or to, to, to match the market with the need. And, um, you know, we're not trying to get caught in the politics of all of those kinds of conversations. We're just trying to create the best solution that is currently available with a road network that we didn't get to choose, the Thorntons they get, didn't get to choose. And so, here we are.
Well, and we appreciate your time and.
Thank you.
And, um, we, we hope, we hope we can make something work here. I, I, that's my goal, is to hopefully make something work. We'll see if we can do it within, within the realm of what we have, what we've been asked to do. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item seven on our agenda, which is our community development director report. So, uh, Mike, what have we got today?
Do you remember, uh, when we had our council planning commission dinner? We talked about rezoning, uh, pub- publicly funded, uh, properties that are owned by the school district or Mer- or Reagan Academy. We wanted to rezone to protect them. That's going to be coming before you at the next planning commission meeting. These are the properties that we are considering here that are owned by the different, you know, that are schools or, or school district properties in Linden. And so this will be coming before you at the next meeting. Um, I won't be here, my son's getting married that night or that day. So, Britton and Brian will be here to present that.
Which day is that?
The twenty-sixth.
Of November, I won't be, I won't be here either.
Mike, I got a question. So even, we'd even be affecting, uh, I see all the charter schools even on there.
O- only the public charter schools, yes, or private.
And the other one on four hundred west, they're, they're public charters.
We'll take this, I think this Montessori one is a private.
I thought it was.
We may be taking that one off, we've, we've got to adjust this map just slightly.
Mike, can you explain that to us again, what, what we're going to be doing with that?
Uh, the proposal would be to rezone these properties. A lot of them are zoned either commercial or residential, majority of them are all residential. To rezone those to a public facility zone.
Okay.
A lot of cities have done that, uh, Orem just recently did it. When I was with South Salt Lake, they did it. Basically, uh, to put it in line with all of our other properties that are publicly funded, like the civic center is, has a public facility zone, the cemetery, the, you know, infrastructure places. So we'd put those in line with, with those. And then we also, we don't, we have a public facility zone, but we don't have a zoning ordinance for it. And so we would be adopting a simple zoning ordinance for it as well.
What would that do for the city or the di- school districts?
Yeah, why are we, what are we trying to accomplish?
It helps protect those properties. So let's say Linden Elementary comes on the market, um, it's zoned for twenty thousand square foot lots. Under state law, the city has the first right of refusal. I think we have sixty days to s- say whether or not we would want to purchase a school district property. If we don't, then it goes to the county, then it goes on the open market. So, basically it's there to protect the, the, it, that investment that, you know, you all have been paying property taxes on for decades. So it protects that, so the city has a little bit more, um, say in what happens with the redevelopment of a school district or a publicly funded school property.
Could make it a little harder for them to sell it though.
It could, because they have to find the right person.
Let's just say, I, I hope this never happened, but let's just say Oak Canyon, closed. The school would, likely would sell for a residential development.
Right. But that means someone's got to come in and request a zone change from us and we have a little bit more say on, on what happens with that then.
Yeah, but, but that being said, the property up at Locust, do we really want to protect that? I mean, that's, and that's just their school, that's just where their.
The bus yard.
The bus yard, do we, we want, do we want to protect that the same as we want to protect schools?
Maybe you want to protect it worse because maybe if we didn't do something like this, somebody might decide that ought to be industrial property, if it's public property. I, I just, I like the idea of us getting ahead of it.
Yeah.
And just so we got some say, I mean, I bought, I've actually developed two school district properties in Salt Lake that were owned by Jordan School District that went through the process, but then it goes to a bid, closed, sealed bid to, for developers to bid on. And I was actually awarded a couple of properties. Tree Farm was my biggest one off Wasatch Boulevard. But I just think we ought to get ahead of it because with the, the way the ballot initiatives work, it looks like they're going to be splitting up Alpine School District. That's what everybody ended up, unless I missed it, they, they all voted to do that, didn't they? So, this is going to probably.
Because this will be now this Pleasant Road, Linden, in your Orem. We'll be running this district, which means basically Orem will be running our district.
Yeah, I say we get ahead of it.
That would be the proposal for the next meeting, so. So I don't think I, I don't think I have anything else, so.
I just have a question, do you know when our, uh, Christmas party is for Linden City?
It has gone back and forth, it's kind of, it's going to be a luncheon this year. Is it the nineteenth? Okay.
Oh, it's at noon, oh.
Is that a Thursday?
It's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just throw out the thing, can we please make a request to somebody to get that chuckle fixed at Main Street and Center?
Yeah, I didn't know about it, so, yep.
It's, it's one that they've saw cut a circle and it's about a foot deep.
No cones around it?
No cones around it.
You're following in it with your bicycle.
Street and Main Street, right in front of the school.
And then my question is, when are they going to open the road?
Center Street.
Center Street, when are they going to get that roundabout done?
I.
I think they're real close.
Yeah, I, I, I want to say within the next week or s- it's supposed to be open, so. Yeah, I, I haven't, we didn't have our directors meeting last Wednesday, so I didn't get an update, but I know it's close.
I'm expecting something grand there to close that down for, for the, for three months.
Well, it was supposed to go till spring, so they're way ahead of time.
I thought, Denny told me it was going to be done this week, but maybe the weather's.
Yeah.
So.
The other thing I was, with regarding streets, and I, I don't, you know, I can't believe how many homes they've already demolished on sixteen hundred.
I know, that was our old word.
So did anybody respond to Carolyn regarding her, she sent out something about the, about the park, the parks and stuff down on seven hundred, what we wanted. Did, I know I gave her some feedback, did anybody else give her some feedback?
Everybody, it was basically, uh, the slideshow of, that was presented when we were at Scott's place.
She, she was just asking for feedback because they were trying to, because the developer in that area wants to know what we expect before he moves forward with anything there.
And I, I, I didn't pro- I read through everything, I didn't provide feedback.
I'll send that out again so it's at the top of your email.
Okay.
Okay.
About this last item, can, can we work it so, uh, something there is approved that won't necessarily change the zoning in the entire city?
Y- yes.
Part of what we've done with Linden.
Yeah, that's my concern.
We would have to create a new zoning ordinance, um, and then, yeah.
That's some kind of overlay or something.
I don't know how you'd do it any other way, because that's such an anomaly.
Yeah.
Piece.
What that road did to that piece of property is just.
I think we have to create something that's pretty.
That's, yeah, that's one of my biggest concerns. And when he was kind of pushing, saying, well, would you approve it if I did this? Would you approve it if I did this? And I certainly wasn't willing to say, well, yeah, we would. You know, but, um, that's the thing.
I gotta tell you too, as a neighbor of them and four hundred west by street, there's a hundred homes that are south of there on four hundred west that are going to be here en masse. If we don't do some traffic calming.
Right.
You know, mediation, to, cause otherwise, people are always gonna see, Rob and I have done this before. They're gonna see that as an on-ramp to the freeway without a couple of stop, stop signs or something.
You know, it's made all the difference to put that four-way stop on four hundred coming down. On lo- on lo- where Locust turns out. Cause it, it's really, cause they have to stop and then.
If, if we don't do some traffic calming things on, on four hundred west, you don't have a building big enough to support your public hearing when it comes up to doing it. We oughta have a plan already in, in mind that might consider. Because otherwise, where they exit that property out onto four hundred west?
Well, once they, once they hit that light, there's nothing.
There's not a stop, stop sign for almost three quarters of a mile till you hit two hundred south. No, I'm talking about four hundred west.
No, you, you go through the light to, once you leave the light, go, go through the new church where the church is, right? It's a straight shot, even though it turns, it's a straight shot.
People are already blowing through the stop sign daily on four hundred west and towards south. Cause they're not used to any other stops along the way.
Straight shot.
And so, again, it's not gonna, it's not gonna keep people from going there, but at least if they wanna drive fifty miles an hour, they might stay on State Street and go, go down, you know, uh, otherwise, we're creating an on-ramp to the freeway.
Yeah, so, you know, probably a, a four-way stop there at Lakeview, where they come out.
Yeah.
That would probably, make them stop there.
On the way out, and then there's a couple other places.
Maybe at two hundred, make that a four-way and, you know.
Well, no, two hundred's already, two already has already won, but that's on, that's, that's over a half a mile from there to, to this property. But there, the church road that goes down to the mission home.
Center.
And whatnot, there could be one there, there could be one off of the street coming here from the seven eleven down. Just to cut, just, we gotta do something to, to prove to the, to my neighbors that we're not just creating an on-ramp through a residential neighborhood. And I don't like the idea of, of, of speed bumps or anything, but I think stop signs, strategically placed would make people realize, you know, if I wanna drive fifty miles an hour, I might s- choose to stay on State Street.
Right.
Mike, I have a question for you, or Jared, some of you guys that are developers, and this is just my lack of, um, I guess, knowledge or education, but my comment about, how does the cost of developing this property increase the cost of these homes that they're putting in there? What does that, how does that inflate that?
What he said, and I review, I cost review subdivisions almost on a daily basis at the bank, to see if their costs are aligned, so we're not worried about a developer getting halfway through the project and he's out of money. You know, even though it's bonded at the city, we still don't want to get into development business as a, as a, as a bank. So, development costs, thanks to the last four years, I wish people would realize what, what damage has been caused in the last four years. It, it, development costs have gone from fifty-five thousand dollars a lot in a normal, maybe third acre type density, three lots to the acre type thing, to over a hundred thousand dollars per lot.
So, if you ask him to put in a manhole, takes that cost and divides it by forty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but what do you say?
So, costs are really, and then interest rate, all the things that, that I was somewhat impressed with this developer, that he,
Yeah.
he, he's hit the issues.
And I think what he's saying is that the land isn't nearly the big, the big number that it used to be. And so, yeah, the Thorntons might be asking for this pro- but that's, even if you drop it, it's not gonna drop the price very much.
Because the cost, the interest rate, the just, they all the bureaucracy, the cost to build permits, impact fees.
But that's what I'm on, that's what I wondered, just from my own knowledge, is all those things enter in, but also that what he's having to pay
Yeah.
to develop the property is really expensive, a lot more than he would have to pay to develop a, another property.
Well.
And so, that, that is passed on to the, that is passed on.
It does get passed on.
And so, these homes for, I mean, is that not true, that these home for, homes for smaller homes on smaller lots are going to be more expensive, smaller homes on smaller lots, than they would somewhere else?
If he were to take this same project and pluck it into Sannequin?
Yeah.
Their homes are gonna be cheaper.
And that's what I, that's, I guess that was what I was reading in my comment.
But is that development cost or land cost? It's land cost, so.
Mostly land.
The margin that he's gonna make in this project is on the acquisition price of the dirt.
Which is what we're planning.
You, so you ca- so, I hear what you're saying, but when you're, uh, we have an underwriting model, and at the end of it, it spits out a return for the investor. You ha- you, you really can't adjust a lot along the way, but you have to come back to the top of the spreadsheet and say, this is what I acquired it for.
Yeah.
And if you're not meeting your goal down here at the bottom of the spreadsheet, this is the place to attack.
Well, the, the fact that densities have gotten to the point where they need to get, I mean, just five or six years ago, we, even in, in these meetings, the thought of ten units the acre was just like.
Horrend.
Out of just, like, extreme high density. I mean, we're approaching that with thirty-five hundred square foot lots, and, and so, that's a real shock.
It is.
When our, when our neighborhoods, unless, I, in fact, I don't see us getting over that, unless it's forced upon us by the state, I don't know if I see us getting that to that, yeah.
A small little section of thirty-five hundred square foot lots with that last ivory phase, um, but.
But again, we had the whole, we had the, we were able to make that work down there. This, you've gotta, you gotta take, bottom line is, nowadays still, you take, let's say it was just forty lots on that piece of property, you times that by seven, that's your car trip per day, that just the new d- homes are gonna generate right out of that little acreage right there. Not to mention the real impact.
The real impact is me coming down I fifteen going southbound.
Exactly.
Let me ask you this, Mike, since, and, and getting, and I know it's getting late, but you're somewhat close to the, the property owner and whatnot. My, my question is, why don't the Thorntons develop that themselves? Uh, I mean, you can hire people to get the entitlements done, you can hire consultants, you can hire a contractor, put the infrastructure in. And there's more money in it at the end of the day to sell papered lots or recorded lots, rather than selling the thing, you know, the seven acres. So, why aren't they doing that?
Well.
I know that takes time and effort, but they've been working on this now for several years, it could have been.
That's not been their forte, their dad might have done that, but.
Hire people.
You guys were here when I wasn't here, when some certain person showed up and said he hated all of us. And if it's conveyed to me, so I went right to his house, I understand you hate me. Well, you weren't there, I didn't see, you know, but whatever, but, you know.
You missed that meeting.
I missed that meeting. I don't know if there's the constitution there to.
I was conducting that.
Hire people to do that now, and so.
But, I think my question is, if our goal is to, um, provide some pi- type of product, affordable homes on affordable lots.
Yeah, that's, that's not my goal.
That's not mine.
It's not my goal.
It's left, this ship's left.
Well, we, we're in territory that, that I, I've never seen before. I mean, I, I, I helped my daughter put a home in down in Washington Fields a couple of years ago. She's been in it about eighteen months now. The rest of the neighborhood is getting built out by a developer that's building two million dollar homes, and they're all rentals. The rents start at five thousand dollars a month, and they're renting.
That's unique.
I'm just telling you, you can't just, you can't look at it.
I think we all, when we grew up, to afford our first starter home, where we, we had moved out to the.
Yeah, you're just, it's just not realistic for Linden to be a starter home community, I'm sorry.
It wasn't designed that way, and then that's where we're getting so close to build out, that it's.
Like, Orem is five minutes away, and Pleasant Grove is five minutes away.
And that's the problem with, with, with legislature saying, oh, they wanna cram starter homes here, no, let them go out. Build a freeway to get, build a freeway, better freeway access to remote areas, and let them go there.
We just gotta be thankful that we're where we're at now, close to build out mostly.
Close to build out.
Right.
Or, or, cause there's, there's stuff coming that, that we won't have any choice in, I think.
I'm sure that's true.
I mean, there's a, there's a handful of states, six or seven states already, that have prohibited cities from having residential, single-family zoning. You know, that, so you can't, you know, you can put a, you have to do a minimum duplex in every.
That's just such an infringement of private property rights, I mean, let alone forcing the city's hand.
It's an infringement on the whole country to open the border wide open and cause a housing problem.
Boy, we better close this.
No, I mean, really, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna deal with this for a long time.
That's what we are dealing with.
But right now, even in Utah, that is a, that is a reality, that's not political, it's a reality.
Is there any other items that need to come? After the record, if people want to listen to, uh, my, my saga, I'll be happy to tell it once. Um, yeah, where I'm at, I, I will be gone, um, probably for the next month, so I'll tell that off the record.
Just be careful the way you say that, I will be gone.
I, I'll tell you something else I said, yeah, when we're off the record, so.
I made a motion to close it.
I second that motion.
We have a motion?
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Turn off your mics.